All right. All right. Good morning, good afternoon, good morning, good afternoon, wherever you are. Hope everyone is doing well today and enjoying their summer. Hello, hello, hello. While you all are coming in, go ahead and drop in the chat where you're located, where you teach or what subjects you teach. So where you're located, what subjects you teach? And yeah, we'll start there. Where are you guys located? Hey, Florida. I'm sure the weather is awesome in Florida. Syracuse, okay. Scotland. Wonderful. Ohio, Jersey, Alabama. Okay, we are from all over, all over. Awesome. I'm glad y'all's summer is going great. In France, wow. Missouri. Yes, where are you all from? I'm in Virginia as well, Jen. Laura, I am in Virginia too. Shout out to VA. Awesome, awesome, awesome. All right. Okay, so just a few housekeeping things while everyone is joining the webinar. You all will be able to access your certificates of completion today. After you complete the survey associated with the study session. And I'm gonna kind of go through a couple of different things and towards the end, you guys will have a chance to ask any questions you would like to ask using the Q and A feature. Okay, so I see we still got people rolling in here, so I'm just gonna give you guys like one more minute and then we'll get started. Wonderful, wonderful, wonderful. All right. I still see lots of people from Virginia, Arizona, Los Angeles. This is awesome. Okay, so we've got lots of different subjects and everything. So don't forget to tell me what subject y'all teach as well. I see geography, world history, US history, all the social studies classes. Awesome. Psychology. Wonderful, wonderful, wonderful. Great. Okay, so I'm for the sake of time, I'm gonna go ahead and get started here. I'm so welcome to Unconference 2024. This study session is focused in on history and how to maximize Quizlet and a lot of the new features that Quizlet has available to engage students more in your content. So hopefully, if you teach, you know, history or psychology or whatever your topic is, right, in either history or social studies or social sciences, you will find something that is useful for you today. Just a little bit of background before I continue to, you know, talk y'all's heads off. I want you to know a little bit about me. My name is Deanna, but you guys can call me Dee. Feel free to call me DDEE. I am a high school social studies teacher. I am out in northern Virginia. I teach at a Title I high school. About seventy-five percent of my students are Spanish speaking. And I've been there, this will be year six, and so I really enjoy being there. I have taught World History I. I currently teach US history. I teach APUSH. I'm trained for AP African-American Studies. I've taught a little bit of psychology back in the day. And so I've kind of had a wide range of topics that I've taught African-American history as well. And so I love all things social studies and I'm always looking for opportunities to help myself and help other educators to engage students more in social studies and develop a lot of those critical skills that we know are important in social studies. I'm also a doctoral student at the University of Buffalo and a graduate fellow with the K-12 Carter Center under Dr. Legary King. If any of you have heard of him, then you guys, you know, know some of the work that he is doing in social studies education and it's awesome. And I also have my own consulting company, Social Studies Scholar, and I love to, you know, support teachers in an array of different things. One of the topics I love supporting with is reconstruction and how we can teach that topic way better, right, than it may traditionally have been taught. So if you ever, you know, have any questions about that, at the end I'll have my contact information for you all to stay in touch. I'm also a boy mom. I have two little boys. I have an eight-year-old and a one-year-old. And I love them very, very much. And I also am a coffee enthusiast. Now, I don't know about y'all. I used to be a Dunkin' girl, but recently I've switched over to be a Starbucks girly. So if y'all see me picking up my Starbucks, it's because it's right across the street from my house. So, but yeah, that's just a little bit about me. And you guys have already told me, you know, where a lot of you are located, what subjects you teach. But I also want to know what's your experience with Quizlet? Are you all beginners? Are you intermediate? Right? You got, you know, you use it a little bit and maybe you're just here because you want to up the ante on your skills? Or are you an expert? Like you know how to use all the new features? You're good to go. You just want to come in here to see if you can possibly get some more fresh ideas. So if you're a beginner, maybe you're just starting off with Quizlet, let me know in the chat. If you're intermediate, let me know. And if you're an expert, let me know that as well. So I'll pause here for a second to see. Wonderful, wonderful. Lots of intermediate, little bit of experienced. Okay, used it some. Middle. Wonderful, wonderful. This is great, because whether you're a beginner, whether you're intermediate or even advanced, we'll be able to kind of look at some of the new features that Quizlet has released and see how we can use those things and engage in our students. And so, yes, we will definitely touch on some of those things. Yes, I love that, Heath, about creating a student-centered classroom. Awesome, awesome, awesome. Okay. So. Just a little, you know, agenda here. Of course, we've done our introductions. I'm gonna be kind of going over. I know most of you all are intermediate is looking like. So we'll quickly touch on the basics of Quizlet for those who are new to it. How you can create classes in Quizlet, some of the basic ways that you can create and find existing sets. Using some of the new features like study notes and Q chats. There's a lot of cool things that are powered by AI that Quizlet has been working on and still working on, and so we'll get to explore those things. And then I'll show you guys some of my fan favorites. You guys may be already familiar with Quizlet Live. Love Quizlet Live. And there's a new feature called Practice Test that I am obsessed with. So we're going to kind of use this as our framework for how we'll explore. But before we do that, I want to talk a little bit about this quote, right, that I found. It says, "If students must do well in school, they must have the ability and competence to read well and study well." And this is from an article called "Reading Ability: Study Habits in Students' Academic Performance in Social Studies." The part that stands out to me the most about this quote is that "study well" part, right? Sometimes students, you know, are coming from various backgrounds and especially in social studies, they may have a stigma that, you know, social studies is just repetition or memorization, and maybe they haven't been trained on the proper ways to think about social studies in a different light and also develop the skills to study well. And this is where I believe Quizlet comes in and fills that gap. Quizlet is going to be, you know, or is, an awesome tool to use to help with literacy development through the different features that they have and also creating a culture of studying in your classroom. I know it has helped me in my classroom to create that, you know, culture of study, and I hope that after today, you all take away some more ideas that it can also help you in that realm as well. Okay, so if you have not already created your free Quizlet teacher account, you might want to go ahead and do that. Looks like some of us, most of us are already familiar with here. Let's look at the chat here. Awesome, awesome, awesome. We're familiar, so you probably have an account, but if you don't, you can go ahead and make one. There's a free account, and then there's also the opportunity to upgrade to a teacher account, so we'll talk about that here shortly. But what I'm gonna do as best practice, I'm gonna continue to share my screen, but I'm going to share my Quizlet account and kind of walk you all through some of the new features that are on the website, okay? So if you do have any questions, remember to use that Q and A feature. And whenever we are done, I'm gonna try my best to be back, you know, to the Q and A around 2:10, okay? So we're gonna lock in for the next thirty minutes or so. Just kind of look at some of these new features and then, you know, any questions you have. Ms. Araz, here she is, our wonderful moderator. She'll be able to kind of sort through some of those questions as well. And so feel free at any time to ask any questions, okay? So the first thing, when you create your Quizlet account, you'll see your dashboard here. You'll see your recent, some options for you to generate some different study materials, and then here I have some of my classes. USVA History, African-American History, APUSH, right? So how do you create a class in the first place? If you're not familiar, you'll go right over here to this plus button. With this plus button, you'll click on Class, and here is where you'll be able to, you know, add the name of your class, right? So you'll create your free class. Araz, can you hear me? Oh, everything okay? We can't, you're on mute. You're on mute, Araz.
Sorry. Hi, everyone. I'm the moderator. I'm backstage. Deanna, we're not seeing your screen. We're not sharing.
I'm sorry. Did it stop sharing or it was never sharing?
It was never sharing.
I'm so sorry.
Just a little bit.
I'm so sorry, y'all.
I'm gonna hop backstage.
Okay, I'm sorry about that. Well, I was showing you all, me, we're showing you some information here. And then, you know, just asking you guys, showing you guys the agenda. This is what the quote we took a look at here. I'm so sorry about that, y'all. And then asking if you guys created your Quizlet account, okay? And so I am going to exit from here and go straight to my Quizlet account. So hopefully, if you're able, you can have another device, maybe where you have your Quizlet account up, and you can still maybe hear or see me. That'll probably be good, so that as we go along, you too can follow along and click on some of the different features. All right, so again, if you are new to Quizlet, some of the basics, right? So some of the basics are creating classes. This is so that, kind of more so, I've found that it's useful for me as the teacher to be able to, you know, separate the different classes that I teach, right? So you can type in your class name. You could put your name beside it, the year section, you know, if you want to create a class for multiple periods. I simply, you know, let's say we create a class here, my USVA History class, right? It exists. If I want to, you know, add students to the class, I can simply share the link with them to be able to do that, excuse me, using the invite link feature here, okay? So I can copy that. I can post that in Canvas. I can email it to them and have them join my class. That way they'll have access to the different features and things that I've created for them, right? Like the flashcards, we're gonna take a look at, as well as some of those study guides and things. Okay, so that's the basics of creating a class. One of the things that people really like to use Quizlet for, if you're a beginner, is flashcards, okay? So if you want to create flashcards, you'll go right up here to where it says "Your Library", and you'll go here where it says "Flashcard Sets." Now, I already have some sets here from, you know, different topics and subjects. But this is gonna be kind of one of the, I guess you can say OGs, right, OG features of Quizlet. And how you can create a flashcard study set for your students is by clicking on the plus symbol over here and then clicking "Create Flashcard Set." Give it a chance below. Now, let's say you wanted to go, you know, old school, right? And you wanted to type in, you know, the name here, the title. Let's say Native American encounters. Pre, let's say colonial America. Okay, and you can add a description, however you want to do that. Now, the old school way, right, I'm gonna show you, just tell you the old school way before I show you the new school way, is, you know, you can enter your term here yourself. And you can either put your own definition or select a definition that already exists, right? So I'm just kind of using, you know, some little random examples here. Or this is where we can start to, you know, see some of those features that Quizlet has. When I discovered this about two years ago, it was a game changer for me in my classroom. I discovered the import feature. So with the import feature, this was awesome, because I could go to any document that I had. Right? For example, let's say, you know, I have an online textbook or something like that, and I want to create some flashcards from that, but I don't have time to sit down and, you know, put a lot of information into it. I can easily copy and paste my data here. Right? And then go here and press import. And, oh, it didn't separate. Okay, so what would the better thing to do is to separate all of those things, right? And it would create, here, let me show you guys what it'll look like after it's created. It would create flashcards for you for the students to use. So normally I would just, you know, share this link with the students. That way that, you know, they would have them, use them awesome. And even in its form like this, you can still do so many things with it in this regular flashcards form. You can play Quizlet Live, which is my absolute favorite, gets the students up out of their seats, gets them working in groups, gets them engaging in the material and running that material, you know, through over and over and over again. Even with this feature here by itself, you can test it out. You can use the match feature and then blast is a newer feature. The students still work in groups, but they're smaller groups. And so that is the basics so far of some of the things that you can do with Quizlet, okay? I will, what I'll do is I'll continue to go through and then at the very end, I know because I see some questions popping up, I will kind of wait to the end and go back through all of the questions that you all have. All right, so let's go back here to flashcard sets. I'm gonna show you guys something really cool. My library. Y'all know how technology is. When you're using technology, sometimes it switches up. All right. All right, so some of the tools that I have been discovering that I really, really like here, yeah, let's just go fresh. Let me do a fresh one. Is the Study Guide feature, right? So the Study Guide feature helps you to access a variety of things, and this is a newer feature. It's formerly known as Magic Notes, but it is called Study Guides, or some people even say Study Notes. But it can help us to basically be able to take existing things that we have, whether it's a reading, whether it's a video, whether it's some sort of document, and make it so that it condenses the information down for students to use and for them to practice some of those reading skills and language development skills that we know are important for students to develop in social studies. So one of the awesome things that you can do here, let's say, you know, you're gonna be absent one day, right? And you are at home. This maybe is last minute, right? Just imagine. I think we've all had those experiences where we're like, oh, my goodness, I need my students to be able to do something. What do I do, right? You can, let's say, this is an example of a free online textbook. It's called The American Doc. Now, let's say, you know, I need to create some items for these, for these students really quickly. There's a paste text feature where you can paste your text. And Quizlet will create an outline for you. An outline of this information. So it'll ask you to tag your course, of course, and we'll just keep, we'll just keep US history. And I have now kind of made a little study guide, right? Study guide or notes. Because if you guys are anything like me, sometimes I don't want to give students like fill in the blank notes. Sometimes I just don't want to engage in lecturing and having them just jot down notes. Sometimes I just want to give them the information and allow them to use that information to engage with what we're learning in class. So this is a great way to create a really simple kind of study guide or like a re, you know, incarnation of your notes. The cool thing about this is that you can edit the things that are there. So if you wanted to change, you know, spoke hundreds of languages, you would just click here and you can change it to thousands, right? It can be whatever you want it to be. And then if you guys look here and you kind of hover over these little stars, it says "Dive Deeper." Let's click on that. Now, some of the options here are "Explain This," "See an Example," "Reword This," or "Remove Bullet." Let's say, you know, students are confused about what, you know, something means. When you share this with them, and I'll show you guys how to do that in just a second, they can engage with it and see, you know, a different way to explain some of the things that are on the outline, right? So that's pretty cool. They can also, you can also, you know, say, "See an example." And then it generates, you know, an in-depth example. Now, one of the important things to keep in mind is that this is a new feature, so it is developing. AI is still something that we're all kind of trying to, you know, grapple with best practices and uses in our classroom. And so it's important to remember that some of these things are still, it may be incorrect or problematic, but you as the teacher can kind of see that and go in and make, you know, changes as you see fit. That way, when students are engaging with this, they kind of, you know, know, okay, how you can establish that in your classroom, how you navigate AI. I know that's been a huge topic here lately, okay? So that's one way. That is the outline here. And then also, if we go back, I want to also show y'all right here. Oops, let's go back. Go forward. I also want to show you how you can take a file from your computer and use that to your advantage as well. So let's say, you know, you wanted to do file from computer, you could do that. If you wanted to transform a video, right? Maybe there's a video that you want students to watch, but unfortunately you don't have any questions. I would say, go to YouTube. I found this video, Black Power and the Birth of Black Studies, Henry Louis Gates Jr. And I can copy the link to this video. I can go back into Quizlet and paste this link. It's about a two, it's a little under three minutes of video, right? And then I press Start Transforming. This is actually really one of my favorite features here. I think it's just, it'll save us so much time. And boom, now there's a study guide. All right, there's a study guide based off of the video. I was absolutely amazed when I saw this. I said, this is awesome. Study guide, and then also there's a way that I'll show you all how we can use this to our advantage to actually create questions for us. Okay, and so that is going to be the Practice Test features. All right, so by the way, if you guys have any questions, if I'm going too fast, let me know. Type something in the chat or the Q and A section. But let's say you have a reading, right? Maybe you're going to be, you know, out one day and you say, listen, I need to create something that I can give to my students and be able to save time, et cetera, et cetera, right? So you can go to Practice Test. And let's see here, let me do, trying to get to Practice Test. Let's see. All right, so what I did was to create the Practice Test. I basically was able to, there we go, there we go. You click on Generate up here. I was looking for it. This is really still new to you all, so I'm still trying to navigate as well. But what I just clicked on was Generate. So right up here at the top right, you'll see a button that says Generate. Click on that and click Practice Test. This is a game changer. This is, this is a game changer for me, because I said, okay, how can I use this Practice Test? Because I might not always necessarily want to give a test, but maybe there is a document that I have that I don't have questions for, and I don't have the time to sit here and think and type out questions, right? That's one thing I love about AI is that it's making things more seamless for us as educators. What you can do is, you know, find a file on your computer. I have this document here from Junior Scholastic, Six Truths About Slavery, right? So I open that, boom, right? That was a file from my computer. This also works well with pasting text, et cetera, et cetera. So you can, you know, highlight and paste from an online textbook, notes that you already have, PowerPoints, et cetera. Okay, so I'll press Start Transforming. I'm going to pick the course. I'm gonna pick African-American History. I'm gonna press Continue. And then the beta of Practice Test starts working to formulate questions. You guys, look at this. So this was the document. Let me show you guys. This is the document, right? Awesome document. Has lots of information. It's helping students understand more about the history of slavery in America, but there are no questions. It's reading, and you're like, well, it didn't come with any questions. You now have questions that have been generated from this document. Now, I looked through the questions and they're actually pretty good, or, you know, decent questions. You can choose how many questions you want it to generate. Here it says twenty. Now, there's two things that you can do with this that I think is absolutely useful for educators. When students access this, obviously you can share, you know, you can have them join your class and they'll be able to access this here. But they can generate and take the test. It'll run through like a practice test for them. But let's say you needed these questions and you like needed them physically, you know, on paper or something of that nature, so that you can print them and pass them out to your students. What you could do is go to Generate and Take Test over here at the bottom right. So I just clicked on Generate and Take Test. Now it's kind of put it in a testing mode, right? So students, you know, could do it this way, or it was me, this is how I would use this. Go right up here to the top right and press the Print button. Now you can print these questions, y'all. How cool is that? Questions that you did not have to sit there and create. Of course, you look through them and see if they need any changes. You can always go back and edit those questions, et cetera, et cetera. But now there are twenty questions that have been generated from one article that you can use to help students study in, you know, deeper detail about a topic, you know, to help reiterate information. And I personally am a fan of having something like this printed out, because then you can teach students how to highlight keywords, how to define things, how to write in the margins, right? How to engage in those literacy skills that we know are so important, right? You can also, let's say you don't want to print this. Let's say you don't want to print this. Let's say you don't want to print this, right? You can go to, you know, save it as a PDF, and you can save it to your computer even, and you can upload it to your LMS. Students could possibly download that and still be able to type inside that document. So this leads us to a lot of possibilities for, you know, just engaging our students, right? So I'll pause here for a second. I know I've been talking a lot. I do see some Q and As here. So, yep, since we got a good amount of time here. Before I start showing you guys some of the other features, right? So let's see what some questions are. Okay, I see that Araz is answering your question, Jose. Can the print size be adjusted or is that in the print settings? So as far as print size, let's see, let's see, let's see here. I think most of the time when you print, do you mean the size of the text or do you mean the size of the paper? Because if that's the case, then you probably can change that, you know, under paper size and make that how you want. But I know my computer gives me a wide range of options. Uh, and make that how you want, but I know my computer gives me a wide range of options. Okay. Alright, so it gives you a wide range of options there of how you can print. Uh, and I'm so excited to use that feature, I think it's, it's going to be absolutely a game changer. Let's see. Can you take questions generated from a document and turn it into a Google form? Um, Diana, I'm not really sure um how to answer that, I'm not sure that you can. Maybe I need more information, um, I think Aras is answering your question. Um, answer key, will it generate an answer key? Will, oh, I see what you mean, so not that I know of right now, I think that is a feature and Aras might have a, a better, you know. Response for this, but I think maybe that is a feature that is in the works, but if. If you wanted to, you could print it out and you could go through and answer the questions yourself first. Um, and have your own answer key, that way, you know, you kind of know. Uh, but actually, I think i- if you give it to the students digitally, it'll probably tell them, let's see, let's, I'm just going to choose like some random. Some random answers here. And I'm just going to go to submit test and see if it'll tell me if my answers are right or wrong, look at that, boom. So it'll tell the students, so let's say you assign this to them and you wanted them to actually do it virtually. They joined your class, you shared this practice test with them, they access it, they're going through and, and they're taking it. Boom, now they have their results, see how much time it took them to do it, what their score was, et cetera. So while I don't see the option for an answer key, it looks like even you as the teacher could take it on your end. And let's say you get a hundred, then I would just print, you know, mine out, right? With all of the correct answers or, you know, whatever the case may be. And look, now, it looks, look, well, look, I guess it answered the question for us. If you print it, then you as the teacher can see what all the correct answers are, so that's what I would do. I would go through it first, submit the test and see what all the correct answers were, print that as my answer key. And I'm pretty sure when students access it, the system has it to where they can't do that, right? They have to obviously answer the questions, submit the test. Um, but yeah, that is really, really cool, I, I guess Quizlet answered that question for us, so hopefully that answered. You all's question, I think that is a really awesome feature. Yes, so it auto-grade, multiple choice questions, open-ended questions, I think the AI feature will do that. I'm going to show you guys actually um how you can utilize that. That feature um through Q chat and homework help. So, these are awesome questions, y'all, uh, let's see here, I want to show y'all. Another feature called Q chat that students can use. Alright, okay, so let's say um. Students were taking that practice test and then what I did, what I clicked on here was study tools. So if you go to study tools up at the top left, you'll see that there are some, some new things that are available. Um, upload notes, we already kind of know how that works, you can upload any uh notes and it'll help you generate different things. You can click on teach me, your AI tutor, and this is where Q chat comes into play. Q chat is the, kind of the AR, AI software that helps everything to kind of run smoothly here with all of these new updates. Um, so, you know, Q chat is talking to the students, you know, hey there, Quizlet is using AI, let's get started. Uh, pick the study set that you're studying, or you can skip this step, right? So let's just say, we clicked um Native Americans and the Colombian Exchange, wonderful. So now, the students are able to engage with, i- it feels like they're talking to someone we know is AI powered. But there are some different options here, okay? So they can select an activity, they can select for the AI software to teach them about the topic. To quiz them about the topic and then to apply their knowledge, right? So let's do the teach me. Boom, alright, so by the way, this information that is in here, y'all, what I did was, um, I went. You know, to an online textbook to get this information, it doesn't have to be an online textbook, it could be notes that you have existing. It could be information from your PowerPoint, but I went to, you know, like my online textbook, I copied and pasted it. Just like I showed you guys earlier, right? And once you copy and paste that information in there, you then have access to do all of these different things. So that is when I, you know, made the practice test and then I said, okay, what if I wanted students to further engage with this on their own? I would tell them, hey, these are some options that you guys have that you can do, use Q chat, right, to help you learn more information. So I clicked on teach me, so it's given a little bit of background, talking about, you know, trade networks, um, communities, distinct art forms. Kinship ties, and this is focusing on native peoples prior to European contact, right? As a way to be culturally responsive and ensure that we honor the integrity, right, of um indigenous peoples. That is why I like this textbook, this online textbook that I was showing you guys so much, because that very first part is about establishing. Um, information about native peoples prior to European contact, right? Anyhow, um, the new world, it defines terms for them, right? It gives a little bit of background about the new world, it mentions Christopher Columbus, and then it even is asking the question here, right? So here's a fun question to test your understanding, what term do Europeans use to describe the Americas when they first encountered them? Students can type new world, they will press the blue send button. And then Q chat will let them know if that is correct, it says, great job, let's move on to the next term, right? So this is a really cool way um for students to interact with the things that you create. Just one thing that you create and you put it, whether it's a flashcard set, whether it's a study note set, whether it's a practice notes. When students access it on their view, now they have the option to engage with it in all of these variety of ways, right? Um, so that is one of my favorite new features, because I think that it's going to help to cultivate. That, uh, you know, attitude of studying well and for students to be able to do that. And then one last thing I wanted to show you all. And that is the teach me feature, right, it teach me um that I clicked on, but you can also do quiz me. Um, you can do apply knowledge, right? What term do Europeans use for the Americas? Um, let's see, again, boom. Alright, so it, it'll engage with the students in a variety of way, in variety of ways that they choose, right? So kind of adding that um differentiation piece and, and students being able to um do what works well for them in this context. Okay, and then for the sake of time, last but not least, I'm going to show you guys. Um, a feature that you can access under study tools if you do decide to use the upgraded teacher account. Um, so using the updated teacher account will give you access to um a feature called homework help. And here, you can search for textbooks, maybe it's a textbook that you use for your psychology class. Or your US history class, a world geography class, and you want students to be able to have access to different exercises and activities. That help them to engage with the book material. Um, one that I will be using this year for my AP US history class is um Give Me Liberty by Eric Foner, right? So I'm going to click in, Give Me Liberty, boom, Give Me Liberty pops up and now there, you know, they have every chapter of the book. And then there are exercises associated with each one, right? So like I said, um, this is just the basic account, everything that you guys have seen so far, you can do with a free teacher account, right? Um, for this one, if you click on, you will see that you do need to use, you know, you need to upgrade um to that paid version for teachers. But everything else that I've shown you all is a hundred percent accessible through the free account. So that's one of my, you know, excitements about getting the paid account is that I then have access to different exercises that are already out there. For students to do as homework, help, et cetera. So again, Quizlet is going to be a really powerful tool for us um this year with all of the new updates. Because it'll give students more autonomy over their learning and also to help to develop some of those really good study ha- study habits, right? And um, of course, I can't end without saying that my first, first, first love. With Quizlet is Quizlet Live, so you know, normally I would have some flashcard sets. Uh, that I would use with my students and, you know, it could be any flashcard set. If I'm teaching African American history or AP African American Studies, I have a flashcard set talking about black student activism, the Black Power Movement. And I want to review the last ten minutes of class, I'll click on Quizlet Live. I love to select the random teams feature because it makes the students get up and walk around and work together. I like to do the term and definition version and then boom, now my students can put the code in. They can join Quizlet and have a good time reviewing all the information that they learned during the class. Alright, so that is all that I have time for today, you all. I will stop sharing right now so that I can um see some of those questions. In the Q and A feature, we have about five minutes left, so we have a lot that are answered. And um, put a thumbs up in the chat if that was helpful to you all, put a thumbs up if that was a helpful session, I know it was pretty quick. Um, but thank you so much, Catherine. A lot of the things here, let's see, we got a lot of those questions answered, thank you to our wonderful moderator, Aras. For um answering you all's questions, but yes, put a thumbs up in the chat if this was helpful. I'm excited as well to explore with you all, and I will also say that if you want to stay connected. Um, with me this year and see, you know, any of the ways that I am utilizing um. Quizlet, you can do so by emailing me or you can follow. Me on um Instagram at Social Studies Scholar. So that is my contact information here, and then I'm going to look at some more of the open questions here. Um, let's see, so. Uh, Jose said, I would love to be able to do this on a daily or weekly basis for formative assessments, any advice for doing this quickly? It's difficult to sign into Chromebooks and sign in, um, the pass is great, but I do want saved data that pass does not provide, okay, yes. So then in that case, Jose, I would say that um instead of using pass, um, maybe also make it an expectation that when students come into the class. If their Chromebooks are up and ready to roll, if not, sometimes I do understand. Um, one of the ways that you could kind of get into this quickly is starting with Quizlet Live, I'll do that sometimes. Because I know it takes a while for students to get locked in, sometimes it takes a while for their computers to get up and running. So I'll have the students come in and on the board, uh, you know, on the smartboard is the Quizlet Live that they can join. And you can use Quizlet Live as the segue, because it'll still formally assess, you'll still be able to see using that feature. Um, what the students know, what they need to work on, Quizlet Live will tell you, hey, this was a commonly missed question, commonly misunderstood question. And you're still able to kind of do your formative assessments in that regard. And then students can still, from there, access all of the additional um features. So that is my advice for there, um, and you can still have, you know, that data that you need. To make your pedagogical decisions, um, so hopefully that answered your question. Are there any more questions? Let's see, alright, I'm going to check the chat as I see. How the Quizlet Live works in the virtual environment, yes, okay, so if you teach virtually, same thing. Just like when I screen shared, um, here, I'll screen share and show you guys. The Quizlet Live feature, so basically, you know, if you have your study sets or whatever it is on your. On your account, you can press the Quizlet Live button, if students are viewing your screen. They have the options here, let's do random teams, let's do term definition. Students have the option to use the code here, you tell them to go to Quizlet dot live and they put in this code on their computer. And now you having, the students being engaged even though you teach virtually. So teaching virtually, this, everything here that you see is a hundred percent compatible, because you can share these specific links with students. All the things we already discussed, uh, but this works really well in a virtual setting. Yeah, it works well in virtual study, when we taught virtually during COVID, I use this all the time. I just put this up on the board and I even scroll down so that students can use their phone and they could um capture the code here. And they can play on their phones, because I know they was going to be on their phones anyways, right, let's be for real. Uh, and so it, it does work well in the virtual environment, so Lucet, or hopefully that answered your question. Um, and then did my print question get answered, Christian, did you ask the question about um? How you could print, yes, I think Aras answered that, I can see answer about printing. Yes, it looks like all the questions were able to get answered. Um, if you want to ask your question again, Lucet, or about print, maybe I missed it, I'm sorry. Alright. But yes, I'm sorry, I don't think I saw your question about the print. Can the size be adjusted when printing? I don't think so, but I also think that it might depend on your printer, what your printer and what your, you know, device has. Um, the capability of being able to do, um, Lucet, or so, that's, that's a good question, um. And then, Aras, there's a question in the chat about expert solutions, a part of the free version, would you be able to answer that? Um, and so we'll finish that as our last question, but yes, uh, thank you all so much for joining, I hope you enjoyed it. If you want to stay in contact, please feel free to email me at um ForbesDiana at gmail dot com. And yes, I hope you guys have a wonderful school year and that you find a lot of these new features useful in your social studies classroom. Thank y'all so much, wonderful, thank you, Betsy.